Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started here in just a few minutes. If I could ask everybody to take their seats, please. Thank you. We're going to start at 6:02, just to get people situated online. This is livestreamed. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Devilla. I'm the Public Affairs Officer for the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management, and I'm also the PIO supporting the Incident Management Team that's here to support Globe, Hila County, and all of you residents. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. Our phone banks have been very busy. We've heard from a lot of you with your questions and concerns, and so we wanted to host this community meeting in hopes of addressing some of those for you. I want to introduce our panels. So what we're going to do tonight is Bob Arthur here is going to provide an operational briefing as to what we've been doing since Saturday morning, and then we're going to get right into a Q&amp;A session. We want to be able to provide all of you the opportunity to answer or to ask your questions that you've been holding on to for a few days now. So with that, I'm going to open it up to the panel. We're going to do some introductions. I'm going to start here with Bob Arthur. If you can go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name's Bob Arthur. I'm a Division Chief for the Department of Forestry and Fire Management, and I'm currently the Operations Section Chief on the State of Arizona's Type 3 Team.
My name is Carl Melford. Is that coming through? Can you guys hear me okay? Sorry. My name is Carl Melford, Emergency Manager for Hila County.
My name is Gabe Levine. I'm the Emergency Management Director for the State of Arizona.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gabe Wright. I am the Recovery Branch Manager for the Arizona Department of Emergency Management.
Thank you, gentlemen. And then if there are questions that the panel can't address, please come see Heather, who's sitting over here when we wrap up for the night, and she'll take your information so that we can get you that information or those answers after this meeting. We are scheduled for about an hour. It is livestreamed, so we can provide more opportunity to some of the community that couldn't make it out. If you have questions, we have microphones set up on either side of the auditorium. Please come to the mic to speak so that people online can hear your questions also. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our Incident Commander, John Truitt.
All right. Thank you. I just want to take the first minute or two here, just to kind of let you know that, you know, we got up here, you know, Friday night, you know, Bob got on scene first and was helping out. And, you know, I just want to let you all know in the audience that, you know, the response from the city, the response from the county, you know, and your local responders here, you know, Chief Robinson out of Globe and Chief Granger out of Tri-City, you know, we all assembled in the parking lot up there by the Anytime Fitness Center. And just the leadership that your local government had showed was just incredible, awesome. They set us up for success, and this is all with all the things that were going on in the city, you know. They were just, they were hammered. They were very, very, you know, committed to what was going on. They were seeking the outside help that they needed. And then for us, when we got here, it was, we were taking direction from those folks. We were here to help organize, help supply, help do other things that, you know, would help with their burden of the actual carrying it out. And that's when Bob came in and was doing the operations and all that stuff. But just really wanted to pass that on, that you guys are in very good hands when it comes to the emergency management, you know, especially Carl Melford here. You know, they were right there on scene, you know, and they had been up for a while and other stuff. So I just wanted to let you know that, you know, I just had to say that to you all here, that the confidence that they showed and whatnot really made this, you know, a very traumatic thing a success in our opinion. So again, I just want to thank them and thank you all for being here.
Thank you, John. And now I'm going to turn it over to Operations Section Chief Bob Arthur for a operational update.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Bob Arthur, Operations Section Chief with the Type 3 Team. I'd like to mention a couple of things before I get started. First of all, you see the map on the screen here, and there's also a paper map over here, a couple of colors on it. The drainage is in blue. Those drainages were covered by people, and the orange drainages or creeks were covered in orange were covered by people and search dog teams. With that being said, all the drainages in the Globe Miami community were covered with DPS Ranger 1 with night vision capable capabilities, and also different agency drones were flown in the daytime, and we flew those several days and had the DPS helicopter back as well. So I'd like to thank a couple of folks before we get started. First one would be Chief Gary Robinson and the staff from Globe Fire, Chief Tony Granger and the staff from Tri-City, Chief Dave Walters from Globe Police Department and his staff, the folks from Globe Hotshots and the folks from the Tonon National Forest here at the Globe Ranger Station, San Carlos Forestry provided a couple of crews that assisted the people in downtown Globe. And we had a couple of local businesses. Allegiance Builders were involved with us, side by side from day one, starting Friday night, and then Action Towing was assisting us with a couple of their heavy-duty wreckers. So those people there, along with you folks, made us successful. So I'm going to start with Friday night. At approximately 1900, the storm hit. The initial 911 calls were coming in with flooding in the area of Connie's Bridge and downtown Globe. I received a call from Tony Granger at about 9:30 that night asking if myself and one of my battalion chiefs that live in the area could come in and help him, and we did. Friday night's actions were all search and rescue based. DPS Ranger was in the air searching the drainages, the creeks in Globe, downtown Globe. We had all the 911 responders staged in front of the Globe Fire Department in the road, and we were sending them from there to any reports we were getting for, you know, anybody trapped, stranded, and so on. The talk Friday evening, Friday night, was that they would be looking at ordering a Type 3 Incident Management Team the following day. I did contact John Truitt, and he came up Friday night and helped us get started. The order was placed for the team Saturday morning. Most of the folks were within two or three hours of Globe. The team assembled around noon on Saturday, and we went to work, and we assumed command of the incident at 1800 on Saturday. First thing, first thing we started doing Saturday was, once we were past the rescue stage, after about 24 to 36 hours, we went into a recovery stage. All the creeks and all the drainages in Globe, starting at the headwaters in the canyon, we put in our search dogs or the search and rescue teams that had dogs with them. We searched all the drainages all the way to downtown Globe Saturday, and then Sunday morning, first thing, we started through downtown Globe. The drainages again with search dogs. We set the incident up in three branches, one branch being the fire branch, and we had three 20-person fire crews with chainsaws, and we would go in and open those drainages up and get to anything that the dogs couldn't get to or the people couldn't get to, and cut up all the wood, woody material that were in the drainages in pieces small enough that either A, we could get those carried out to roads and bridges to be hauled off, or in pieces small enough that the next rain, the next time the drainage ran, those pieces of wood would pass the next bridge and the bridges downstream without plugging the bridges up and continue on. The second branch we had was the law enforcement branch. That branch consisted of the local law enforcement, DPS, Arizona Rangers, game and fish officers, and then all the search and rescue teams with the dogs. And then the last branch we had was the heavy equipment branch, consisting of city and county backhoes and loaders, a couple of small excavators from local contractors, and then the two heavy-duty wreckers that were provided by one of the local contractors. And we worked those three branches in unison. First branch with the search dogs, they went through the area first, followed by the fire crews that could go in and cut up any of the woody material, get them away from the cars. And then the third branch was a heavy equipment branch. They would come in and remove the vehicles, any woody material. And last but not least, we had about 300 propane tanks from Matlocks to, I don't know how far they went, and I'm not sure how many of them we've collected, but we've collected a bunch of them. Those propane tanks were pulled out of the creek and stacked on the side of the road. We would make contact with Matlocks, and they would come in, either them or other propane distributors, and pick the tanks up and haul them away. As far as, you know, that was Saturday, Sunday, Monday, we are out to the wheat fields area now, still finding propane tanks and a couple of cars. We did find one car today in the creek there at Hackney and Broad, so they're still showing up. We think we've got them all, but they are, the cars are still showing up. We're assuming the cars that we're finding now are older cars that people weren't using. I don't have anything else to tell you. As far as an operational update, again, the colors on the map, blue would be drainages that people searched by foot, and the orange would be where the bridges or the drainages that were searched by dogs and people. Yeah. I'll quit now and turn it over to Tiffany, and then I think we'll start the questions.
Thank you, Bob, for that. All right. So do we have any questions from anybody here with us tonight? If so, please make your way to the mics, and we will address those. If not, that's okay. We have some information to provide for you. There is a Disaster Assistance Center that is open at the Hila County Fairgrounds. I'm not sure if any of you have been there yet, but it opened, I believe, yesterday. I can't remember what day it is today, but I believe yesterday. So I would like to turn it over to Gabe Wright. He has the best information for the DAC and can inform all of you as to what services are available there. Gabe?
Absolutely. Happy to do so. Before I begin, I'm going to throw it over to Gabe Levine for a couple of quick remarks.
But good evening. As I mentioned before, I'm the Director of Emergency Management here in Arizona. Wanted to start off by saying I'm sorry for your loss. I know that this community has lost loved ones. You've lost homes. You've lost a piece of the community. And as you begin the recovery, we recognize that that is a long process, and it's a long process that everyone takes a different path on. And there are services that the state is supporting the county in providing, and we are happy to help and honored to help the community here tonight and in the future. This past weekend, Governor Hobbs declared a state of emergency, which directed state agencies to provide direct assistance and opened up the state's Public Assistance Fund to support response and recovery efforts for Hila County most specifically. We do that through a series of programs and processes. For us in state emergency management, all of these events are led by our local partners, supported with state resources and expertise, and through a national common coordinated framework. And something I really want to highlight, we talk about neighbors helping neighbors in Arizona and communities helping one another. That is very evident as you look around this community and you see all of the different entities and agencies that have come to help, come to help our partners and friends at the city and towns, at the county, and here in your community. We have resources from across the state and from across the country, from multiple states in the Southwest and all across the U.S. from coast to coast. As we move forward, we are eager to learn about what the needs are, how we can plug programs in to help. And right now, from the state's perspective, our priority is to continue to support Hila County in the establishment and adding services to their Disaster Assistance Center so that direct services can be provided to community members, and then completing and refining the damage assessments and impact assessments in the community. As we look to turn on or request access to different programs and funding sources, it's important that we have good information and good data out of the community so that we can paint the picture to those program administrators and get access to those resources moving forward. So I'll turn it back over to Gabe Wright, our Recovery Branch Manager, who's going to talk a little bit more about some of those services that are available.
Absolutely. Thank you. I want to echo everything Gabe just briefed on regarding the loss in the community. Our hearts are out here with you. The Disaster Assistance Center is the opportunity for survivors from the disaster to be able to go and receive various different types of services. The hours for this center are from 7 to 7 p.m., so 12 hours a day. Feel free to stop by anytime. We have at least 12 different agencies present, and as Gabe mentioned, we're looking to continue to increase the presence and provide different types of support. To go into a couple of the organizations we have present there, as of yesterday, I don't, we're working on getting numbers for today, we have the American Red Cross, Southern Baptist Disaster Relief, the Salvation Army, Team Rubicon, Community Bridges. We have the State Department of Economic Security, State Department of Transportation, Arizona Public Service, Department of Agriculture, Register of Contractors, Department of Insurance and Financial Institutions, and Department of Veteran Services. As this recovery progresses, we're happy to add more based on the community's needs and the impacts from this disaster. Other than that, I believe that's the services we're providing at that Disaster Assistance Center and happy to hear other needs that we can provide to the public at that center.
Thank you very much, the two Gabs. I also failed to mention that we do have a phone bank. The phone number- The phone number is nine-two-eight-four-zero-two-eight-eight-eight-eight. If there's something that wasn't addressed here, you're more than welcome to call the phone bank. It's open from eight A.M. to six P.M. With that, we still have some more questions. So what I'm reading for is a list of probably the most popular questions that are coming in from the phone bank. We thought it would be beneficial if you all heard those questions with answers. One of the biggest questions we've received as a team, and I know the phone bank has also, is, is there any assistance or money for small businesses? Who would like to take that on the panel?
So for the small businesses impacted, we're currently working on the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, which takes five businesses to claim economic loss due to this disaster. We have just created, prior to this meeting, a QR code and a flyer that outlines the process that we'll be working with our partners to get that program turned on. So if there's five businesses that claimed, that have economic loss due to this disaster, please fill out that worksheet, and we'll get that program turned on pending those five businesses.
I'm going to add to that. So also, we're working with the Salvation Army and the United Fund of Globe Miami, and they're accepting donations, and they're working out a program for those that were around during Telegraph Fire, similar to what we had go on then, so they could take those donations, total that up, and come up with kind of a formula to evenly distribute that amongst both residents and businesses.
Thank you, Carl. Another question we received is, who can help me if I lost my transportation? Who would like to take that?
So I'm going to answer that from kind of two perspectives. If a vehicle was lost in the flooding, that's something that you can take up with your insurance, to try to get a rental. A lot of the insurance companies offer a rental in the interim, but as far as, you know, if that's not available or difficult to access, we're currently working on including the Disaster Assistance Center in the route for the Cobra Valley Transit that goes around, so that way people that don't have a ride available can have access to those services as well.
Thank you. You might want to hang on to the mic, Carl. How do I report property damage for cleanup assistance?
So a few different options here. So to clarify some of the stuff that came up at the last meeting, we do have a self-report tool that's out and available for the public. If you guys stopped by and saw the literature out there, it does have that QR code for that. I don't want people to think that that QR code is the only way to report the damages, and I don't want the public to think that we are casting that responsibility back onto the public. There are damage assessment teams out and hitting the road, but this is a large incident. And I am from this community. I know that some of these homeowners, unless you knew where their house was, you wouldn't be able to find it. We wanted to use that as a tool for people to not get left behind and not get missed. So that is one option. Of course, the second is when folks are coming out and doing the actual damage assessments, they're coming door-to-door, so they will be there to assist you as well. And then if all else fails, that's why we have that call center stood up. The phone number that was given there earlier, nine-two-eight-four-zero-two-eight-eight-eight-eight. I have it memorized now. They are taking a lot of calls, and again, a lot of these folks are volunteers, are doing this stuff outside of their day jobs, so please be patient with them. We're keeping it staffed as much as we can, and they're fielding as many questions as they can and helping folks out. They've even had some go as far as to pull up the damage assessment tool on their phones, and walk through, and basically do that for the people. So they've been really doing great work in there.
Thank you, Carl. And I think something that, you know, maybe goes unnoticed, and this is a great question, what mental health or counseling resources are available? This was a traumatic, significant experience that all of you experienced last weekend, and there are services available. I know that there are some set up at the DAC, if somebody, one of the Gabs, would like to speak on that.
I'll go first. I got the mic first. So yeah, there's quite a few of those services at the DAC, Disaster Assistance Center, that offer those mental health services, and they are fantastic. I want to give one example that, you know, I personally have never been one to reach out for that, but there was this group, Hope, that's bringing those therapy dogs around. We brought them over to the dispatch center to visit with some of the dispatchers that were taking the hundreds of calls coming in during that event, and the difference it makes is incredible. If you had taken me ten years ago as a police officer and said that a puppy was going to help deal with trauma, I would have never believed it. It's incredible. And they've been out at the Disaster Assistance Center. That's just one of the many little things that they have, but there's so many, so many resources out there. I mean, if you're in any kind of need whatsoever, please take a visit out there. It's kind of a one-stop shop. They've got tables everywhere, and every time we see one of these, I'm even surprised at the new organizations that are coming out, offering help. So yes, that is one of the services that's available there.
Carl, if I could jump in, I wanted to circle back on the benefit of that Disaster Assistance Center, of being able to go to a location and to get services after a disaster. Our team's done a really, really good job, is my understanding, of providing cleanup services with working with different NGOs that are able to provide cleanup services, mucking guts, to help get some of that debris out of homes, to help protect them for a future, and be able to go into that repair phase of disasters. The Disaster Assistance Centers do, we really aim to have it be that one-stop-shop to receive, you know, emotional and mental health care. We have the Hope Dogs. We also have a Hope, we do have a Hope doggie in the audience today as well, so feel free to stop by and give some pets.
Thank you. The next question we have is, where can I get updates on road closures, services, and community meetings? First off, for road closures, when we're talking ADOT, or the U.S. sixty, any state highway, there's a great resource. It's az511.com. It provides real-time traffic updates, delays, closures, things of that nature. So that's one way to get the state route closures. As the PIO, I have been working very closely with the city and the county, and they've been doing an excellent job of messaging on their social media channels when it comes to providing timely updates for any internal road closures, meaning city. So ADOT's not going to have jurisdiction over the local road. So I would, you know, great suggestion is to go to the city's Facebook page, Hila County's Facebook page as well. They've been doing an excellent job of messaging updates as they come in. Does anyone else want to touch on that?
Yeah, so we realize that social media is probably one of the biggest tools right now for communication, but I also recognize that there are a lot of folks out there that don't utilize that, and that's where that call center comes in. Those folks are absolutely passionate about helping people and plugging them in with the right resources. So don't be afraid to call, don't hesitate, and especially when you're here, there's so much literature out there that has some of those disaster resources on it. Please take advantage of it. That's why it's here. When this incident first kicked off, I realized that, you know, our community did not have everything that we would need, so we started making those phone calls to the State Office of Emergency Management, and requesting whatever we can get, reaching out to our volunteer organizations, bringing in whatever services that they could provide, and they are here to help us. So I really hope that we can take full advantage of that, and don't wait. Please take advantage of it. If you need help, do not be afraid to ask for it.
Thank you. Another question we received is, what do I do if my septic system or well was damaged?
So there's a few different septic, I mean, septic system enforcement is done by ADEQ, and that's a difficult one to address immediately, because I understand the limitations and the cost of flood insurance in this area. But that's something else that I would ask you guys to call into the call center and make us aware of it, because we do have an environmental health team that's going out and looking at these things. So let us know about it. And also, if you have a damage assessor come out to your property, let them know about it. If you're doing the same, the damage assessment tool, let them know about it as well, or place it in there as well.
Thank you, Carl. One of the biggest questions we've been getting at our ICP location, and people stopping by, is how can I volunteer, or where can I donate items that are not monetary? There's been so many people in this community that have come together to volunteer, to help their neighbors, people from outside the community. We had a huge donation of water from the town of Kearney. So it's, the volunteers are pretty much across the state, coming here to support all of your recovery efforts. Where can people go to volunteer or donate items that may not be cash?
So first, I'm going to say that DAC is the one-stop-shop for that. There are so many volunteer organizations there that you can sign up to work with, but that is one of the longstanding challenges that we've had here in Hila County, is us as government, if you are a spur-of-the-moment volunteer but not vetted through a volunteer group, we cannot deploy you. We cannot give you instruction on where to go, because there's liability behind that. And I am not a big fan of government bureaucracy, but that's the reality of it, is we cannot utilize those spur-of-the-moment volunteers. But the Good Samaritan Law protects those that are trying to help others in emergency situations. So I say this not necessarily as your county emergency manager, but as a fellow member of the community. If you want to help someone, knock on their door and ask if they need it, because that exchange between those two people is covered by that Good Samaritan Act, and that's the way that we work around this. On the same end, if you don't really have someone that you can contact directly, or you're still in need of help, that call center will be able to plug you in with somebody. But I mean, this is a neighbors-helping-neighbors situation. I've had a lot of people show up, even at our office, with a shovel and a bucket, and say, "Tell me where to go." And unfortunately, I cannot. But I can tell you that if you contact another person, a homeowner, somebody who's renting or a business owner, and you offer help and they accept that help, that can be done. So this is a situation where neighbors helping neighbors is the number-one best option when it comes to that private property portion. And then also, the vetted volunteer groups that we're utilizing, I'm sure you guys have seen a lot of them in the streets. We're sending them out anywhere and everywhere they can. They come in in massive numbers, massive, massive numbers, but it's amazing how quick you see that big group spread out and realize that this is a large disaster area. Even that amount of people gets spread thin really quick, and they're human, they get tired. There's some that have left, there's some more that have come in. This is just, I mean, a beautiful humanitarian response, but I would encourage those that want to help to help your neighbors. And for the disaster groups that are here, on behalf of our community, thank you. From the bottom of my heart, thank you.
And if anyone has questions, there's two microphones on either side here, and if you're too shy, or you're not sure if your question is going to be answered appropriately, Heather's over here, and she can take your information and get you that answer, the answer to the question that you have. One of the questions, and this has been a frequent question, is, how do I find out if my house is safe to re-enter?
So again, it's important to know who that authority is. If you're within the city of Globe limits, you need to contact the city of Globe. As far as Town of Miami, same with them. With Hila County, we're working with our infrastructure group to kind of get that sorted out. Community Development is the department that is more than likely going to be in charge of that, and that's who we're going to start with, and we're reaching out to engage with them as well. Sorry, one more thing to add, too. So when looking at re-entering a home, a couple of factors to take into account are not only the structural integrity of the home, but the environmental safety and the public health safety of it. Mold is going to become an issue for some of these flooded homes, and we've built out a working group of our environmental health specialists within the Emergency Operations Center that are going to be deploying out to some of these flooded areas to help out with that.
Thank you, Carl. And like Carl had mentioned, there is a table out front with a lot of material to hopefully point you in the right direction with some information. One of the other questions that we received at the phone bank is, is there financial assistance available for residents?
So as was mentioned earlier, and there's, I believe I saw documentation on that, working with the Salvation Army and the United Fund of Globe Miami, yes, there's donations coming in, and they're working that system out to get donations out to people. It's the same process that we had during Telegraph Fire. It worked, it got relief, and as these donations come in, we're pushing them out to the people. And I see a lot of news cameras out there, so I'm going to say this, those donations are greatly appreciated. This is an awesome community of friends and family, so please, if you can donate to help get some of these folks back on their feet, not only the homeowners, but the businesses, Globe Miami needs help.
Thank you, Carl. And I believe we have a question. Did you have a question, sir?
Yes, I do. While I understand this is an act of God, is there any plans on the state or federal level on how to prevent this type of flooding in the future? I asked this question at another meeting and never got a solid answer, only that this is a hundred-year flood, and there's no way to prevent this. I'm hoping this panel will be able to answer more answers, provide more answers. Is there any plans to address the burn scars to prevent future runoff, deepen canals, or any other efforts to prevent this from happening again? Will the creeks be engineered at any point? Is it even possible to prevent this, and what elements combined into making this flooding this bad? Are any steps being taken? And is there any government entity that is going to take proactive actions to prevent this, or will it strictly be reactive actions next time it floods? Thank you.
So I'd take part of that question at least. You had a few different elements there, but if I understand, what you're asking is, from the state and federal side, what resources or what actions would help mitigate the impacts of the flood? Is that correct?
I'm worried about it happening again. If it happened once, you know, it could happen again, and I'm trying to see if there's going to be any action from the government, at the government level, to try to prevent this, or to try to mitigate it so it's not as bad in the future.
Absolutely. So the state has mitigation programs, mitigation being actions and measures that we can put in place to help minimize the future impacts of flood events, such as the one that occurred this past weekend. We will be working with Hila County to scope out some potential projects and initiatives to help mitigate the impacts or reduce the impacts of future floods in that area. There's a couple different state mitigation funding programs that can fund projects for this type of event. Also, some federal mitigation programs that are available, that our grant administrators will be working with Carl and Hila County to scope out projects and work through the award process in the coming months. Our focus right now is still on the recovery, but right on the heels of recovery is the mitigation and strengthening the community so that there will be future events. The scope of those future events, the impact of those future events, are things that this community has control over, that we have control over, and can influence through our actions, our decisions, and it starts at the local level. All incidents, all these events are locally-led, state-managed, and federally-supported. So when we talk about what is the state and the federal role, it's to support the locals and support what Carl and the cities and the towns would like to see happen. And remember that this community is in the driver's seat, and there's things that we can do as a community to help minimize the impact and minimize future loss.
I'm going to add to that from the local perspective. So every major disaster involved, triggers us to revisit emergency operations plans based on strengths and shortcomings. We do an after-action report and see what we can do differently as far as emergency management goes. As far as mitigation measures go, we're going to use Russell Gulch as an example. There was a multimillion-dollar mitigation project just done in that watershed to help improve the flow of the water. I'm not a public works person, so I can't professionally say the names of those pieces of infrastructure that were put in there, but part of it was the bridge at Hospital Drive, and then a bunch of improvement projects going upwards that were supposed to increase the flow capacity. the flow capacity for that watershed. All of that was destroyed in this event. That, that is back to ground zero. So, yes, there are constantly mitigation factors going into place, but for this particular event, no amount of mitigation measures could have prevented this. It, it's impossible. This was a disaster. We do what we can to put mitigation measures in place to prevent, uh, emergencies from happening, but some are unavoidable. I mean, this is a situation that looks, uh, that responds similar to an earthquake. You can do what you can to recover and prepare, but realistically, with an event of this catastrophic magnitude, there was nothing that could have been done to avoid this.
Okay, and, yes, go ahead.
To piggyback on this topic, you say there's nothing that could have been done to prevent this. I will disagree. I do not think that we could have prevented over several billion gallons of water running down our, our creeks in a very short duration. I don't disagree with that. We will have another flood that's a fifty-year, a hundred-year-plus. Four years ago, we had the Telegraph and then the floods there. We had this same scenario happen. We came in post-mitigation and did a lot of creek cleanups. Alls we did is remove some vegetation that was built up. We did nothing to deepen our channels. We did nothing to remove the trees that are growing in the middle of our channels. Those trees collect cars, trailers, logs, and what happens when those catch? They disperse water into our private properties and grab another truck and another trailer. We've, we've built two bridges in the Narrows that are too low, especially with our sediment that hasn't been drawn back down to original base. And the words that I understand is, the Corps of Engineers won't allow us to go in there and deepen those. I call BS on that, or whatever the government stuff is, that doesn't help us for the next flood, which is gonna happen. I just traveled all over Oregon, and there is creeks, rivers, that are flowing billions of gallons of water daily, and they're not flooding people. They don't have trees in the middle of their things. There's things that we can do. The sides of the creeks need vegetation to keep from eroding. The middles need to be cleared and brought down. You talked about over by the hospital, those, for a lack of better term, I'm gonna call them concrete carpets that put down to help the flow. I'm not an engineer, I am a contractor, I do know dirt, I know a little bit about flow. Those things are not anchored in the creek. They butt up against each other, and if they're not tied together, water's gonna get under them and peel them and roll them just like a piece of carpet. That is not the proper tool. I know it was an effort, it was a good effort, it was not the tool. There's a channel over there in Miami that is a concrete-lined side and a concrete bottom. Those are the types of things we need. A sarco mine has a lake up above it. There is a mineral creek that runs through the mine. It is concrete-walled and concrete-lined. When it floods, it flows on through. It doesn't tear things up. There are things that we can do, but unfortunately, our hands are tied from the government and people that won't let us, and you say it starts here? How does it start here? There is multiple contractors in this town who are willing to help. I've been there since Friday night, helping, donating all of my time, equipment, labor, paying my guys out of my pocket. I do not expect a dime back. These are our people, these are my people. These are your people, Bob, these are your people, Carl. I heard you say, sorry, I'm carrying on, Bob, I heard you say that the incident team wasn't even ordered until mid-morning Saturday. The waters receded by eight-thirty, nine o'clock. Volunteers from this town were down there trying to help. You were down there trying to help. How come we couldn't get those ordered so that they were there by noon instead of eighteen-hundred the next day? I'm not taking anything away from what y'all have done for us, we appreciate it, we thank you. But the gentleman earlier gave a bunch of kudos to our city management. I have some comments myself, but that's for a later date. There are things that can be better. Our emergency notification, I never got a notification. I have people that got a notification at midnight. That notification should've came in at seven-thirty from however your system works, from a push of a button that should've been dispersed. I'll leave it at that for right now.
I'd like to comment on that real quick. Um, I'm not gonna disagree with you. I'm not gonna argue with you. I mean, you are a hundred percent correct. When I first came into this job, um, I, I was looking at the washes the same way. I grew up here, and like, yeah, I mean, you're, you're spot-on accurate. There's a bunch that could be done. And I, I work in emergency management, not in public works, so I don't get to do any of that, but I was involved in a project pretty early on, and then I looked at the property lines. And I was under the impression that all of the creeks were owned by some, uh, one of the government organizations or something. But if you look up those canyons and you look at the property lines, most of those houses that are on the side of the property own part of the creek. Uh, some property lines between homes across the street are the center of the creek, and that makes things incredibly difficult. And then you've got portions of the creek, there's a few that the city owns, very little that county owns, and big chunks that the, uh, some of the mining industry owns. And that restricts us from doing a lot in there. And then the Army Corps of Engineers has restrictions on what we can do in there. Again, I'm not public works, this is just kind of my overview from emergency management, but I get it. It is frustrating. It truly is. And I, I can say that, from my office's perspective, we are doing all that we can. And as far as the mer- emergency notifications go, everything that we get from the National Weather Service is rebroadcasted. The Hila County does not have a climatology office, we don't have anything that can originate that. We can only rebroadcast what's put out. And furthermore, those notifications go straight from National Weather Service to us. My system just kinda doubles down on that, but I can't, I do not have the capability of originating a flash flood warning.
I have a question exactly on that subject. So, the county has ready, set, go, and in a fire, you are getting incident reports from people on the ground fighting the fire, and you're tracking where the fire's going, and you have a ready, it might be there, set, you know, go, or set, ready, go, anyway, however you work it. I would be curious to know what is the format for flooding? Because the National Weather Service issued severe thunderstorms, uh, early, and then continued to update, and I would imagine that there were, were people on the ground that could've been calling in prior to twelve forty-five when we got an emergency notice. So, how does the county see their system working in a flood when giving some notice would've been helpful rather than twelve forty-five when the incident was really over?
So, yeah, I'll give you kind of my real-time perspective from that, too. So, again, our, our notification system rebroadcasts everything we get from National Weather Service. With post-fire flooding, um, that's a little different, because we can anticipate that kind of increased flow and everything, and these fire guys will tell you, um, they're not even done putting out the fire before I'm talking about, like, hey, what's this burn severity look like? And I'm already talking about that.
As the fires were going in Miami, people were being told, "Get ready, get set, okay, now go. Now it's close enough to you, you gotta go." It, it doesn't appear that there is any sort of formatting for a flood event of this kind when it had been predicted by the National Weather Service. We knew how big the flows could get from all of the hills. People could see it at six-thirty, the, that huge row of clouds. And so there does still seem to be a delay in any kind of notice in this ready, set, go, if it wasn't put out until twelve forty-five.
So, let me finish answering your original question. So, when we're talking about advanced notice, right? With fires, it's, it's a bit different. The incident management team's talking to us, telling us that we're approaching a management action point for set or go. Ready is the constant status for Hila County, because we live in an area full of flood zones and we live in an area full of forest. And if you look at that ready, set, go model, um, one of the first things on that ready, set, go model says, "Sign up for emergency notifications." We live in an area with a, a ton of dangers, so we encourage people to stay in that ready status. Set is essentially our pre-evacuation notice, and go is evacuation notice. So, with post-fire flooding, we start working with the incident management team, looking at burn severity, talking with hydrologists, and putting those measures in place to give that advance warning. This storm that came through did not have as advance of a warning. So, again, we are not climatology. I cannot originate a, a, uh, a flood notice. The most we could do was put out sandbags and weather briefings, but even looking at this storm, it, the severity of this storm was not, it was much, much worse than what was anticipated. Much worse. So, um, I was getting the alerts on my phone, the same time everyone else is, because I'm local, around the same time that I was dispatched to that parking lot, um, on the phone with the dispatchers trying to coordinate an effort. Full transparency, my emergency management department is two people, myself and one other. My, my employee was not able to get to us as he was cut off by the flooding. I went out to that parking lot, I met with the team, and we started strategizing. I started calling the state and ordering stuff on the phone from a parking lot. So, uh, pretty much any resource I could think of, I threw to them. Um, and we started talking with the police and the fire department. We ended up sending, we did originate some notices specific to the propane for specific areas that were identified by law enforcement that we wanted folks to shelter in place. And to expand on that, uh, when we worked the Telegraph event, we had to actually come up with some original messaging for that as well, because the way that those canyons work, they all bottleneck, for those that are out there. And the road, for the most part, is closer to the waterway than the, the homes themselves. So, we strategized in advance with that fire and came up with a message that instead of saying evacuate, was shelter in place or head to high ground. Because if we would've put people to evacuate and they couldn't get through Kearney's Bridge or Beer Tree Crossing, we'd have a giant traffic jam of people flooding into the waterway because the road was overtopped, and that's exactly what happened. So during the Telegraph Fire, that was hugely successful. Um, these type of storms do not allow us that initial prep time. Uh, the prep time was driving from my office to that parking lot in Judy's. Unfortunately, that, that was the alert we got, and that's the alert that we ran with. This, once again, was an unprecedented disaster.
If I could, could just add to what Carl was saying. So, ma'am, your, your question on what is the format for evacuations? Ready, set, go is the statewide standard for evacuation notifications and, and statuses, regardless of the hazard. Yes, we use it for fires, that's where it's most, most readily apparent, but I'll tell you that we use it for the nuclear generating plant, we use it for all sorts of different events throughout the state. When you talk about flash floods, and to your point, the, the National Weather Service alerts and warnings that go out, they talk about seeking higher ground. So if there's a threat of flash floods, because of how quickly those incidents develop, the recommendation is to seek higher ground, uh, particularly where there's, there's shelter that is available. I would also say that as we look to, to the future, we talk about where this community wants to go. If flooding is a concern, and certainly it sounds like it is, that there's things that we can put in place, the community can put in place, and look to invest in to help buy down some of that risk. Early warning systems with flood gauges and sirens and notification systems that are automated, so it doesn't require... Carl and, Carl does a great job. His, his EM shop is outstanding. My heart goes out to the rural EM, uh, emergency managers, because they work in one and two-person organizations to do Herculean efforts in communities that deserve Herculean efforts. And if we can invest in some technology, invest in early warning, we can mitigate some of the risk and buy down some of the risk for the community. I would also say that in, in rural communities, and sir, to, to your point, I think it's outstanding that the community jumped right in. It's one of the beautiful things about the rural communities in Arizona, is that when we have travesty hit us and we have bad things happen, everybody pitches in, and they go to work immediately. And it, it takes a little bit of time to get, get up here to the top of the world, and it takes a little bit of time to get resources from around the state. And your emergency management department at the county called within minutes, and the statewide apparatus started to churn. And, and we started to pull in resources to support Carl and the needs of the city and the needs of the town and the needs of the county, uh, as, as quickly as we could mobilize those things. And certainly, we have opportunities to refine those processes, to improve those processes, and to get resources to move quicker and get more resources out in a more expeditious fashion. And I would say that it requires all of us to identify where, where are those opportunities for growth, and where can we improve?
Thank you, Director. And really quick, one more. I'm gonna go to the lady in the white, she's been patiently waiting at the microphone.
Hi, thank you. Uh, my family has owned a home on the creek at eight-nine-one Jesse Hayes Road for seventy-five years. So, has my neighbors on the left, who are my cousins, and my sister on the left. We've been in this community for that long. I, it's not a primary residence anymore since my parents passed away eighteen years ago, but they have, they willed it to the family and we take care of the house. Unfortunately, it's not a primary residence, so Red Cross is enabled to help us financially. And of course, do we have flood insurance? No, we don't. So, I'm looking for answers from, um, for assistance. I know that, uh, APS has donated two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the community. Where does that money go? Along with ABC Family, it's got a QR code on their, um, television that says, you know, donate. Where do those funds go? How can we access them? Um, because it's not a primary residence, does that mean that we don't have an opportunity? I would say, yes, um, I'm so help, I'm so thankful for all the volunteers, because we've had amazing volunteers. But I tell you what, I have talked to the city countless times in the past twenty years, twenty or thirty years, and to piggyback this gentleman's concerns, the culvert between the Dormees and the Gonzalez's residence has been, um, does not function, has been clogged for over twenty years. Too expensive to do it. Um, the other culvert on the other side of the ice plant, on the Thompson's, supposedly is private property, they don't do anything with that. So when Jesse Hayes Road, when it rains, now we're not even talking flooding, we're just talking massive rain, all that water comes spilling into our residence, all into, um, and, and then into the creek. You know, and if, and if you were here last week, you know that it rained, and the floods, and the, the creek was up to about ten inches from going into our property. So I know that the, you know, the, the land, the earth was, the ground was saturated, and so this made this whole flooding situation last Friday more difficult. But when I called the city and I, I, you know, and unfortunately, I guess this is more of a City Works question, and you guys aren't City Works, but I need answers to that. You know, they have come out and they built a little berm or whatever to, "Oh, yeah, this will help keep, you know, the water from coming into your property." It does not. I know that they're gonna build, um, now that Kearney's Bridge is built, they're gonna build a sidewalk, and the sidewalk is, you know, I, I don't know if they're gonna put any kind of drainage or culverts, but that's what we need. We need a way for the water. It needs to go somewhere, you know? It needs to go and flow back into the creek and get off the streets and get off, you know, our, um, our property. Okay, so the second question to, and thank the Lord, we got, um, inspected this morning, and our home, built in nineteen-twenty-eight, is, um, is okay. And it, we, so we got the okay from the city that, you know, it's salvageable. But the two properties on both sides have been condemned. And what does the city, does the city help with that in removing the properties and helping, um, them, um, you know, demolish their homes? Um, I think that was my last question, thank you.
Um, so I, I work for Hila County, so I can't answer on behalf of the city of Globe, but, um, so the donations part of the question in the beginning. The United Fund of Globe Miami and the Salvation Army did an incredible job pulling together that kind of, um, donations dispersment process during the Telegraph Fire. Uh, I know that it took- I know that it took some time for them to iron out the money aspect of it. I'm not an accountant, so I can't really attest to how they do that, but they did amazing work. And from what I understand, it took a few months for them to establish that the first time. This time, they got it set up in five days because that process had already kind of been created. So as far as the whole primary, secondary residence, I don't have an answer for that, but I know the Salvation Army will. So the Salvation Army already has an established mechanism and process for that. And then the United Fund has the accounts and everything, and they work together marvelously. They are just wonderful, wonderful organizations. So please take that information. And I know what their initial plan is to do is to take that total amount of donations and kind of divvy that up amongst the victims and make sure that everyone gets their share. And if more donations come later down the road, they'll be able to assist even more. So please don't be hesitant to take advantage of that. But again, for the other questions about the municipal public works, I can't answer those for you.
Thank you, Carl. And it is seven, but we still have people that have questions, so we're going to give a few more minutes to allow the rest of the people that are standing some time. Sir, go ahead.
Was this classified a 100-year flood event officially? Or what is the classification on that?
So I haven't seen, so I've requested some reports from the National Weather Service as far as like what level of event this was, because the National Weather Service out of Phoenix is who provides us the data, and they have very limited rain gauge data in this area. So when I first looked at the flow that was coming off, I know it was measured from the Penal Peak. I've been here for a long time, and I looked and I said, that flow is not consistent with what we're seeing right now. So our Public Works crew and our hydrologist is working to try to create a concept of, just based off of what we actually saw, how we can qualify that as a 100-year, 200-year, 500-year flood. Because the data that's provided to us from the National Weather Service is just too limited in our area to give us an accurate description of that. So that's something that we're pushing towards trying to create ourselves to the best of our abilities.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you for that question.
I have a follow-up. The reason I asked is that FEMA requires a 100-year flood standard on all bridges in regulated floodplains. And so I was just curious if Connie's Bridge had that 100-year standard engineering and if the, sorry, if the City of Globe would be willing to provide that information to the public?
So I can't answer on behalf of the City of Globe, but I, looking at where we're at right now, even baseline, we're well above 100-year event with what we saw on that. So, but again, as far as the construction of the bridge, I have no involvement with that. That's a city project, but that's the best I can answer that.
So there's nobody here from the city that can answer questions?
I can't answer it offline.
Offline? Well, it'd be nice to have public commentary on that.
The Connie's Bridge was designed to fit a 50-year...
My name is Mariano Gonzalez, councilperson, District 5, City of Globe. Some of you know, some of you don't know, I've had a 26-year career in emergency management. Retired seven years ago. But I spent 10 years at the Division of Emergency Management, Gabe Shop over there, writing the state's emergency plans. Before that, I was Director of Emergency Operations right here in Hila County for 16 years. Couple comments. ADOT built that bridge for us under contract. We had to be very patient as they added more features to the approaches, the roads, and we had to be patient. They said, be patient, we'll get you some more help in road construction. So we waited. There was one error that occurred there on the design. The consultant did a three-inch error, and that was corrected. Another item was that the concrete contractor failed some testing, and our engineers told us that, and that's public record. And we'll get you some information about the contract itself. It's an open type of set of information, but the contractor had to re-route to bedrock that bridge. And yes, it was designed for a certain year, and I don't know, 50-year. But we made them do that, and there was a lot of consternation about the delay. That's the truth on it. I have no problem waiting for a better product, especially when we're spending the public's money. But I will tell you, ADOT supervised the entire project. Our own engineers, and there were two of them in that process, ran roughshod over the contractor for the shoddy work. So when they made them do that, we had to wait. But it did what it was designed to do. After that bridge, immediately afterwards, we had a large storm on the mountain and it came down. And I went up there as soon as I heard that and I did the video. I can sleep at night knowing that the contract specified by ADOT finally was completed successfully. It is still standing, and I'll cross it right now if you want to take a ride with me. It will meet the next flood moment. As far as parameters of what we suffered, I've had a long career, as I said, in emergency management. And anytime I'm looking at a region, I look at the danger. Paul and I go around all the time, what kind of flood event we're looking at. Mine was 130-year flood, Paul's at 100-year flood. It doesn't matter, it's beyond anything we've seen before in this particular instance. So if anyone wants those records, put in a Freedom of Information Act and we'll get it to you. ADOT has to be tasked with that as well because they designed and built that bridge. We were lucky to have that bridge in its place. The theory behind that is really simple as an emergency manager, which I really like to say. It's designed to pass through anything that comes at it. It's built to withstand it. We have two-inch iron rebar on the sides, but it goes to bedrock. And today, it's ready to go again. And I think it's a worthy investment, and we're very pleased with ADOT's oversight and our own engineers who stopped work and said, no, go back and do that again, Mr. Contractor. And we had to be quiet and silent because it was ADOT's bill, but they made sure that they reported to us every week and we dealt with the contractor on a daily basis. I wish this process had been faster. I wish a lot of things, but the most important thing is that it got done and done the right way. So our current engineer is a specialist in bridge building. Lionel is very good at other bridges we have built so far. The one on, excuse me, it's not Mesquite, I forget the other one, Cottonwood, is built in the same fashion. It's designed to pass through all of the water that does come at it. Yes, it did jump its banks, yes, it ran around, and yes, there are things that, right now, could happen. I want to say that, is this something we have to worry about? Of course it is. And after the discussion last night, we welcome anyone as we move forward to begin the work with planning. And that's the dry bones of working, of planning for the next event and working with the Corps of Engineers and working with ADOT and all the other agencies that helped build these things and the early warning systems. I want to say one more thing personally. During my career here in Hila County, I installed through emergency management, I think it's four gauges, Beer Tree and a couple up north. We did not have the resources to really put in a system. So I Scotch taped together rain gauges and equipment from Maricopa County. We used their cast-off gauges and installed them where we could. We got a grant to do that, $6,000. It didn't go very far, but we did what we could. And we learned from the hydrologists what an early warning system looks like. We're not on a flat floodplain like Maricopa County. They have a lot of space to receive floodwaters and channel it. We don't have that luxury. It's only eight miles from here as a crow flies to Penal Peak. That's not a lot of time to install things that will warn us and be effective about it. And that's one of the nuts we have to crack going forward. We could put 1,000 gauges on this drainage and it still wouldn't give us enough time. Why? Because every event is different. Some side of the mountain is wet, the other side the next time is wet, and so the parameters change. Keep in mind that we're dealing with western drainages, not like the eastern coast, and it's usually high velocity but short duration. We can't change that concept. We do have better technology now. You heard them say about the drones searching. That's a heck of an idea to apply to a flood warning system. Get the drones up, let them look for us. Report to a computer. Those are concepts that are there and viable right now. The Weather Service has got an amazing set of gauges. Do you know they bounce their signal off one of the layers of the earth because it's perfect for transmitting? These are the things I learned over the years. These things cost money, it takes intensive planning, and the grant systems are there. But we have to know what we're after and what we need to ask. So I invite you to join in to whatever committees local government needs to advise us on how to move forward. We want your experience on those committees, we want productive outcomes. I'll say one thing about the Corps of Engineers, I said this last night. We have a little creek over there by Copper Rim, and it runs through a chute of earth. It can fail, and for two years, we've been working with the Corps of Engineers to mitigate that. And they're being very proactive about it, but here it is, two years later, we're still not done with just the study, the hydrology on that. But it is possible and we see an end to that. So working with the Corps out of Los Angeles, they come out and they begin the funding process now to pay for the study. It can be done behind the scenes, this is what local government does. We don't announce it day by day, we just go do the work. We know it's going to be a long process, it's another grant that our people have to work on. So we have to do all this without raising your property taxes. I want to speak to that for just a second. Don't raise our property taxes, we have to find other streams, we have to go find a grant. Guess what our staff does? They go look for those grants and 90% of the time, they're successful so we can proceed into another part of public safety. We're more than happy to do that, but it does take money to do that. So again, when we wrestle with budgets, we have to decide what our priorities are. Obviously, this is on our radar. Do we have enough money? We don't know. We know the impetus is there, we know the danger is there. The chances are actually quite small, but they are there. And I can't argue with anybody who's been cleaning the channels, you know what you're doing. But the point being, of all the years I've worked in emergency management, this is the moment, because we've been successful working together, of divvying up the responsibilities region-wide and sharing the load and getting the resources we need. This is just another page. We have a very good working relationship with your entire area, from government to business, to the non-government organizations, the volunteers. Been very successful in the last four years that I've been on the council, and this is another project we're going to have to look at and ramp up. Today, Mr., our state, our federal senator, Gallego, was here today. Tomorrow, Eli Crane is going to be here, and I expect by Sunday, the governor will be here. Now, speaking as a councilman, I'm very grateful that they're coming. They will be tasked by certain people in committees to go get that funding that we need. But we need a list from you all of what we need to tell them to bring. You're more than welcome to visit with them, and please be respectful, but let them know our needs. And this is the time for the community not only to ask for donations to recover, but to put in place these processes and grants, mitigation, to help our future. And I said last night, the last flood that entered Broadway, Broad Street, was 1954. I believe at that time, they probably built those 20-foot walls that are at the northern end of the channel. And we depended on that after the telegraph fire, they didn't overtop it. But they did this last weekend. So it's not time for us to design a new normal, what's that going to look like? So we need your input. The internet is a wonderful thing. Donations have come in faster than I've ever seen in my career because of the internet. United Fund and Salvation Army are collecting that. There's other GoFundMe accounts that people are donating to, and we're receiving donations across, from across the nation, through the various civic organizations, Lions Club, Elks Club. They're coming in, and that's probably why we had 1,000 volunteers on Monday come in from the LDS. So please, give us your suggestions, bear with us as we go through this process. And I'm not going away. I still have another couple of years of tenure as a councilman, but I've brought everything I've learned to this table as of 6:00 PM last Friday night. We will continue this process. So I hope it answered some of your questions of the behind-the-scenes work that the city has been doing and that the county has been doing. So it takes these guys, it takes brain power as well, and we need your brain power. So think about that as we go into the future, this new normal. And I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. I'm going to take two more questions and I'll get right to gentlemen in just a second, but this gentleman's been waiting, so go ahead, sir, with your question.
Hi, I'm not much of a speaker, but I just have a couple of things to say. Everybody that lives on Jesse Hayes got slammed. We got flooded. We lost everything. I would like to know why they made the bridge so low. I've lived on Jesse Hayes for 20 years and I've seen a lot of stuff go down that river, but I've never seen 250, 300 propane tanks going down the river, plugging up the little bitty dam that they're, little bitty bridge that they built. The other thing I want to say is, is there any help out there? I lost, among other people, have lost handicap scooters, wheelchairs, crutches. Is there help somewhere where you can get that replaced?
Sir, so the first part of the question, I'm going to have to defer to the City of Globe, but again, the Disaster Assistance Center is hugely beneficial with stuff like that, but on a personal note, I'm familiar with some resources for accessibility equipment and stuff like that. So please, I'll come find you after this and I'll plug you in with my contacts there.
Thank you, Carl. Sure.
So Connie's Bridge was designed to fit that intersection. You have a railroad track and you have to be able to cross it across there. It was designed to flow the water underneath it and not clog. It's a 50-year flood bridge. We talked about why not making it a 100-year flood bridge? Because if you did, you'd have a bridge sitting out there with no ramps that you can get to. It doesn't do any good. So if you have a 50-year that's designed to take the flow over the top, but then when it drains, it will help that. It didn't hold up the river, it didn't block it, it didn't clog, it did its job, it's still there. But the railroad tracks are there, Broad Street's there, Connie's there. They told us, when you have a 100-year flood, it will be flooded from Connie's to Stratton's House, and that's what happened. So to raise that, to design it up, did no good because it'd just be an island of a bridge. So that's...
Thank you, Paul. Gentlemen, would you like to ask one more question?
Oh yeah, that was just kind of the answer, but I mean, I don't know why, why would you accept the design of a 50-year bridge just to meet the design requirements of an intersection? I mean, look at all the businesses now. Connie's Bridge was significantly higher and this has never happened. The flooding after the telegraph fire mimicked what happened now. So, and none of this ever happened. So I don't, I think that's kind of a cop-out. There was other options to build that bridge. You could have detoured and rebuilt Connie's Bridge in place and still had the same bridge height. You did not have to do it like that. It says FEMA requires a 100-year standard bridge across regulated floodplains. That's what that is. I don't know why the city accepted a 50-year thing. Obviously, it was just to meet the rail height, but you damaged people's businesses by having to meet the rail height rather than explore other options.
What would a taller bridge save us?
Well, a taller bridge wouldn't have slowed the path of the water, it would have went under. under. Yeah, you do that, but how many times has this done that? Never since that bridge has been constructed. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, and we'll go ahead and finish you two gentlemen, you have been waiting.
I had a list of things that I want to talk about as a contractor and stuff, but I know everybody's ready to go home. I just keep hearing about all these difficulties, these difficulties, difficulties. They say, oh, we can't do this because it's difficult, we can't fix the creek because it's difficult. How many houses, how many businesses, and how many lives need to be taken before we make solutions instead of just saying everything's difficult here in Globe? I can, I can address that. I came into government with the same frustrations, limitations of what we can do. I was a police officer before I was in this position, and one of the biggest things that we had an issue with was no way to communicate with everybody at the same time. Let me give you an example, we had a silver alert, a missing elderly person that had wandered off from somewhere, and we were searching for that person for hours, including hours after they were located. And there was no way to contact the public in masses and notify them. So when I took this office, I looked into getting a notification system, and we got that notification system in. That notification system has been paramount to saving lives in this county. So we are finding ways to go around it, and yes, the frustration of limitation in government sucks. I don't know if I was supposed to say that here, but we're doing what we can.
I'm not, I'm not talking about the notifications, I'm talking about preventing before it even happens. Having those creeks cleaned out, having things engineered. You guys talk about private properties, private properties have nothing to do with the center of the creek having trees and erosions, as Joe said. Those are all things that could have been done prior to these rains. You said nobody could tell when that, that rain was gonna come. Thursday, Miami got flooded out, I went out there, dropped everything, loaded equipment up, we went and cleaned Miami, it was a disaster. Yet Globe knew what happened in Miami, and they're claiming that the next day it happened here in Globe, and we didn't know it could happen. It happened 24 hours before that to a town that's a mile from us. We had, we should have never had people down there. We knew how the creek conditions are from the telegraph fire. Jesse's Road, everybody on that side, if they needed emergency personnel, can't get anything because we haven't fixed Russell Road. That was an easy way out for people, if somebody needed to come in or go out. That was one emergency route out of that whole canyon. And nobody can get out of there because we haven't done anything with Russell Road either in four years, because we're gonna say it's difficult, there's this, there's that. We gotta come up with solutions, we can't just keep saying things are difficult, things are difficult. I'm not talking about you should have sent an amber alert, the creeks are running. This is stuff that's been four years in the making, the brush has, it didn't just grow yesterday, that stuff's been in those creeks for years. I've lived at the end of Kellner Canyon, I've never seen this much backup come through my neighbor's yards, every single rain. And it's not nothing about a notification, it's you guys letting contractors get out there and start making some leadway on getting these creeks, creeks cleaned out. We volunteered so much time and effort to clean up Globe, and yet I guarantee you, we'll never get a call, hey, let's get those creeks cleaned out, let's get down to bedrock, let's put some, we could go in there and do all kinds of stuff. You guys are eliminating the community from preventing these kind of disasters from happening, and all we keep hearing is, it's difficult. And we needed solutions. You know, actions speak louder than words, and now people are lost so much, there's lives that are taken, it's just like in Tonneau Basin, how many lives had to be taken before they built that bridge out there? That's what ends up taken. So you guys take out the grain of salt, but it's, it's not notifications, it's being proactive. Let's start getting this stuff taken care of.
I, I agree, and I respect your compassion. Again, I am just emergency manager. I, I do not do construction, I do not do any of that kind of stuff, and I wish I could more accurately answer that, but that's something I would recommend that you take up with one of the elected officials. In my position, I do emergency alerts and I support responders. So I, I do agree with your compassion, I just, I can't speak on behalf of that stuff. That's something I highly recommend you take up with some of the elected officials that are over the public works departments and community development departments. I wish I could answer that question better, but I just have my one lane of my job. I can honestly say though, that with the telegraph fire, with the post-fire flooding, there was funding available that allowed us to directly work with contractors, and that was made available by, by a House bill passed by the state of Arizona. That funding was paramount to getting that work done quickly, and that actually gave my office the authority to work with these contractors and, and get them out there. In my career in emergency management, that is the one and only time I've seen that happen, and that funding no longer exists, I no longer have that authority or that ability. So I agree with your, your compassion and your concern, and I wish I could answer on behalf of, of others, but I can only answer on behalf of emergency management doing notifications and getting resources for our response agencies.
Thank you, Carl. And before we close, I just wanted to reach out to the panel, see if Gabe, the director, Carl, or Bob have anything left to say.
I just want to say thank you for having us this evening, and we really appreciate the comments and the feedback, and look forward to working with this community as we move forward.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming out here. I know we went a little long, but I wanted to make sure we addressed everybody that was at the microphone. So thank you very much, and have a great rest of your night.